The broadcast of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council will now begin.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the city council for May 1st. I'll note that this meeting has remote participation by members of the city council and city staff as authorized under Minnesota statute, section 13D point 021, due to the declared local public health emergency. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll so that we can verify a quorum for this meeting.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
You're here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Reich.
Present.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Kano. Council President Bender.
Here.
There are 10 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Colleagues, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments from councilmembers to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes from the April 24th meeting. We have a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and those minutes are adopted. Next, we have referrals, petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and those are adopted, or those are referred to the proper committees. With that, we'll proceed to the order of new business, beginning with the mayor's weekly report on the state of our local public health emergency. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, councilmembers, for the continued partnership through this pandemic. We have reached yet another Friday. This past week, I delivered my State of the City address on Wednesday. And as you may have noted, the tone and substance were a very significant shift from previous years. We were planning on delivering a State of the City address in a park with food trucks and activity. Nonetheless, that'll have to wait until next year. Instead of planning for investments and our top priorities and discussing that in the State of the City, we're looking at opportunities to contain costs and dealing with this emergency as it unfolds. And as I said Wednesday, there's really nothing normal at all about this new normal, but we're in this and adapting alongside the rest of the world. And yes, this new normal has reshaped Minneapolis, but it does not define us. Yesterday, the governor extended the stay-at-home order an additional two weeks, ending on May 18th. In addition, all customer-facing retail businesses can reopen operations for curbside pickup, starting on Monday, May 4th. Every business must develop their opening plan that meets safety guidelines to ensure that payment is collected online and staff must have the necessary PPEs to safely work. And everybody, of course, needs to make sure they're using proper physical distancing. There have been 11 emergency regulations to date, none in the last week. Then moving on to health by the numbers. The total approximate number of completed tests as of right now is 70,276, which is up about 20,000 from last week. I believe this was news as of last week, but the governor's plan to work with both the University of Minnesota as well as Mayo to get up to about 20,000 tests per day will be critical as we figure out how and how best to reopen. The total positive cases in the state of Minnesota is about 5,136, up about, up over 2,000 from last week. The patients who no longer need to be isolated are 2,172. 343 deaths in the state. Hennepin County has seen 1,738 positive tests, 225 deaths as of recently, which is double from last week. New statistic, the number of healthcare workers that have contracted COVID-19 is 923, which is a fairly significant number. That's almost one-fifth of the total. And just my deepest thanks to them, you know, putting their lives, their health at risk for the sake of protecting and treating others. The total cases requiring hospitalization are 1,044. There were 365 hospitalized as of today, with 130 that were hospitalized in the ICU of those 365. Some Minneapolis case information, we were up to 456 positive tests, 176 of which are hospitalized. There have been 152 that have recovered, which is the same number as last week, and the total deceased is 58. I noted last week that, as of last week, about 91% of those, of the fatalities were taking place in congregate healthcare facilities. The percentage is down, but the number is up. So the percentage, I believe, is somewhere around 83 or 84% of total fatalities in congregate care facilities now. So the percentage is down, but again, the number is still up. Minneapolis demographic information, the Minneapolis public dashboard is now up and it shows both race and ethnicity information. The unknown category, which will exist, so it's not identified, is either is white or black. But the unknown category can be attributed to either not completing an interview or individuals choosing not to answer the demographic questions. So I want to highlight that this data is not completely reliable, given that there are a significant number that have not identified or have either forgotten to or have chosen not to identify. On congregate care facilities, the Health Department is reaching out to licensed congregate healthcare facilities that are covered by that most recent emergency regulation to provide guidance. To support that education, a newsletter was also sent to 177 emails of staff at Minneapolis licensed congregate living facilities about the regulation. In addition, City Comms has posted the guidelines for the congregate care facilities on the city's coronavirus print resources webpage for download and use. Moving on to contact tracing, the Health Department is preparing to conduct contact tracing under the direction of the state. And this week, two Health Department staff are attending that state training. Under COVID resources, the council, thank you to your work and Mayor's Office, worked together to identify funding for critical COVID resources in the amount of $63,000 that I believe you all will be voting on later this morning. So that'll be $10,000 from Mayor's Office and $53,000 from Council Ward budgets. And that, also along with hand sanitizer and thermometers, this will allow the purchases of 15,000 masks, of which 3,000 will be distributed to the MPHA. So thank you to the councilmembers that have been working on this one. It's greatly appreciated. And I think, you know, this is a good sign that, you know, we're all doing our part here in a time of crisis. There was also a face mask drive this last week with the recent, with, which we got up to 6,894 masks that were donated to the public, 6,144 of which were cloth masks, 750 paper ones. These masks will be distributed to long care, long-term care facilities and other congregate care organizations. Moving on to Office of Emergency Management and Workforce. The city's workforce continues to maintain normal workforce strength and essential functions of government. OEM's efforts remain focused on the situational awareness of trends, impacts, and offering guidance and support across the enterprise. Procurement, and Council President, feel free to interrupt me at any time. As for procurement, the total spend as of April 29th was $3,190,468. That's an increase of just under $2 million, which can be attributed to the Emergency Housing Assistance Program, which, as I will note later, is, is, the amounts that we can provide are far less than ability to accommodate demand. Next, under Human Resources, I want to talk a little bit about staff reassignment, which is something that we've been very much pushing for to ensure that our enterprise is poised to deliver services at an excellent level, but also where there are services that are perhaps more needed than before, we can transition staff to accommodate them. And yes, this does in some instances require a shift in job responsibility. And so I really want to thank all of our staff that have been willing to, to transition to new work that, you know, they didn't necessarily sign up for, but is very much appreciated that they're doing. About 41 employees have been reassigned directly to help and respond to changing enterprise priorities and needs. And then staff from four departments have been reassigned to seven different departments. So staff from NCR, Reg Services, City Coordinator, and the Convention Center have been reassigned to Joint Information System, Communications, OEM, Health, City Coordinator, IT, Property Services, CPED. There's been a, there's been a shift. And that's a good thing because we need to adjust and adapt. These employees are focusing on numerous service areas, including cleaning and sanitizing work around areas and equipment, conducting outreach for the Health Department, working with IT and conducting virtual team meetings, contacting and following up with low-income renters regarding housing assistance, providing communication support, and in some cases even responding to 311/911 calls regarding instances in which the stay-at-home order has been, has been violated.
Mr. Mayor, we have one question or comment from Council Vice President.
President, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your report. And I am checking in to understand how those reassigned employees, are the, are they being paid from their home departments or from the new areas that they are being reassigned to?
Council Vice President, Madam President, excellent question. My understanding is that they're continue to, continuing to be paid through the same payroll system, which would be through their home department. But let me ask perhaps Mark Ruff or even Patience if they can give us an explanation there.
Hello. Council member, councilmembers and mayor, the majority of the cases, the departments are, they're being paid from their home department. And we are tracking all of that information through our payroll system.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Public safety. The MPD, this is their enforcement of the stay-at-home order. And to date, there are no reports of citations or arrests that have been made. As I believe I mentioned last week, traffic control agents from Reg Services continue to do out education and outreach related to the governor's orders. And the number of parks with multiple complaints has reduced from 42 to 11. So I will say that's a, it's a good thing, I guess, that the complaints are being reduced, but I don't want it to, I don't want that reduction to be caused by people simply becoming accustomed to others not following the order. This order needs to be followed. It's in all of our, our interests for, for health and welfare of our city. On April 6th, small parks and school green spaces had 25 complaints. And on April 28th, there were only two complaints reported throughout the city. The Park Board now has park ambassadors at 40 to 70 sites, daily addressing social distancing issues. Traffic control will continue to provide visual presence, driving through with yellow flashers around small parks and school playgrounds. And social distancing education to groups will be done on the perimeter of parks with discretion. We've been in a very constant contact with the Park Board and appreciate all of their work on this front. This, next on fire, this past Saturday night, crews responded to a fire at a commercial recycling facility located at 179 Irvin Avenue North. Upon arrival, crews found a large stack of wooden pallets and plastic bags containing recyclable paper burning outside of the building. The crews were able to get the fire under control in about two hours. The owner of the business had some surveillance video showing that it was two arsonists starting the fire by igniting the veil of paper. And so arson was in fact confirmed as the cause. 311. There are so many frontline staff in the city, and sometimes we forget about those folks on the phone, day in and day out, that play a crucial role in serving as the, as the face and the voice of our city. And if you're not aware, 311 went virtual in a 24-hour period as we faced a stay-at-home order. And that's a very impressive feat. 311 remains 100% virtual and fully staffed six weeks into the COVID virus. In addition, they have managed to finish installing a new reporting package and as of Monday, completed the first part of a really significant upgrade without any disruption to service. That's thanks in part due to some amazing collaboration from IT, who, as you can imagine, are working their tails off right now. If your contact with IT is anywhere close to my amount of contact with IT, I feel very bad for them. Since March 30th, 131, 131 business licensing complaints of businesses not complying with the Governor, Governor Walz's orders to remain closed if not essential. 226 social distancing complaints. These little people having backyard gatherings or just gatherings in crowds and not following the six-foot physical distancing rule. I mean, this is an issue. And this is an issue that we, we need to continue to address. And, you know, yes, of course, those first steps are education and outreach, but, but these larger scale gatherings need, they need to cease. The intake that the 311 does every day is really essential to learning about where things are going well and maybe not so well. So we really appreciate that continued feedback. State and federal activity, as reported last week, there's a housing file that passed out of the House Committee and it would provide 100 million in rental assistance to qualified households. That's 100 million from their plan. The Senate's rental assistance proposal is less of $30 million is being considered by the Senate Committee. It's for bonding. The Speaker of the House, the Senate Majority Leader, and Governor have all publicly stated that a bonding bill will be a top priority before the end of session on May 18th. The size of the bill are up to, are up for lots of negotiations right now. The Senate is looking at a bill around 750 million. The House wants 3.5 million. The Governor's is somewhat in between at two. I'm sorry, I said 3.5 billion and then 2 billion is where the Governor's is. Not sure if I mixed up my Bs and my Ms. We have a really good team lobbying right now and thank you for their work because I know they're quite busy. Elections. On Monday, the House State Government Finance Division approved House File 1603, which includes vote by mail, but was withdrawn from the committee process due to a lack of bipartisan support. House File 3499 is also a bipartisan agreement, which allocates Federal Help America Vote Act dollars as well as policy provisions to assist elections administrators with expected challenges associated with COVID-19. And by the way, thank you to our clerk's office and our election department for working vigorously to figure out the next plan. And see, my lights just went off here. You know, give me a second. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to the housing gap funding package. The city received nearly 8,000 applications for the Minneapolis Gap Funds for housing, about five times greater than we have the funding available to support, which really puts some emphasis on how great the need is right now. At this, at this time, we've got staff are working on a timeline when payments will be made on behalf of the approved applicants. The first payments are expected, expected to be made in early May and payments will continue. All referred applications have been processed and available. Next, small businesses, staff have duplicated and reconciled applications. They have also conducted the random selection process and are running the regulatory checks on those businesses right now. And we expect the first batch of money to go out very early next week. Cost containment, the wage freeze for appointed, politically-appointed and non-represented staff went into effect this week. We are still in the process of working to get that wage freeze in place for represented staff as well. I'll end there. I'm happy to stand for any additional questions and I appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional questions or comments from councilmembers? I don't see any today. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I'll just quickly, while you're here, just a couple of things. First, I wanted to highlight all of the work that's been happening around housing stability and assistance from your staff at the Mayor's Office, council staff, and our team led by Andrea Brennan and others. They've been engaged in hours of conversations with folks from the state and the county on everything from sheltering folks experiencing homelessness to preparing a systematic plan to help people stay in their homes and all the while administering those, that grant emergency assistance funds that the mayor highlighted earlier. So I know that many staff had shifted to answer calls for families who are struggling and in need and talking with hundreds and hundreds of families who are trying to stay in their homes. And I know it was emotional work on top of all of the other things that our staff are doing and that we're all working really hard to, to get more assistance to more families. So I just really wanted to lift up that work. And again, thank you and the Mayor's Office and all the staff that are working on that.
Thank you. It's a big endeavor right now, that's for sure.
Thank you. And then that completes the mayor's report. So thank you very much. We do, I was going to move up the order of resolutions and invite you, Mayor, to stay and say anything that you might want to on this item. So under the, and I'll, actually, I'll, I think I probably need to just accept that report from the mayor. I don't think we typically vote on that item. So.
Madam, Madam President, we don't vote. You just order it to be received and filed.
Perfect. Thank you. So we will receive and file the mayor's report. Under the order of resolutions, we have an honorary resolution, which is declaring May 3rd through the 9th as Public Service Recognition Week in Minneapolis. And I just wanted to pause and I'll ask for a motion, but we have been in such an extraordinary time. And I think now more than ever, really taking a moment to recognize our public employees as they step up or switch into new roles and really come together to support our community through this time all the while, you know, managing through the impacts of this crisis in their own lives. So we appreciate you so much. I'll ask for a motion to adopt the resolution of Public Service Recognition Week.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion or comments from any of my colleagues? Seeing none, on behalf of all of us again, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, perfect. Council Vice President, thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to echo your comments. You know, I talked to a number of staff people this week who worked all last weekend, fielding calls, translating for folks applying for the housing gap funds and just going over and beyond their, their, the call of duty. And really want to just acknowledge and appreciate all of the, the public service workers in the city of Minneapolis, including our own staffs, who have been phenomenal in the face of this crisis as well.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I'll be really brief, but I just want to echo those words. I think one of the things I just want to say to all the city employees right now is just what I hear back from, you know, my constituents, just how much it means to them to see the city still working, to see us adapting to this, to be safe. And at the same time, you know, see that city of Minneapolis truck go by, see all the services still go through on time. So just heartfelt thanks to everybody.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in queue. So with that, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and that resolution is adopted. This brings us to the reports from our two standing committees. And we'll begin with the report from the Business Inspections and Zoning Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Madam President, before you proceed, I'm sorry to interrupt. We had a second item of new business, which was just receiving and filing the mayor's 2020 State of the City address. Doesn't require a vote, but if you could just order that filed, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. As the clerk noted, the mayor gave the State of the City address earlier this week via video, and I will direct the clerk to receive and file that report. So that moves us to the Bids Committee with Councilmember Goodman giving the report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Business Inspections and Zoning Committee is bringing forward four items for approval this morning. Item number one is a liquor license approval for Billy Sushi. I'll note, this is probably a very hard time to go into business. I believe they are going to open it on Monday and they're going to be open for takeout. So if you have the opportunity to get down there, please do. Item two is the environmental grant applications for the brownfield. Item two is the environmental grant applications for the Brownfield Run, which includes deed grants as well as the Met Council's tax-based revitalization grants. Item three is actually accepting grants from deed for the redevelopment fund. And item number four is our loan forbearance policy for city loans. This is approving a six-month forbearance for repayments on certain loans with balances that are over $200,000, as well as approving up to two 90-day forbearance extensions not to exceed a year. This is an effort to try to make it easier for those that have been borrowing money from the city for critical and important projects so that they can continue to do those projects without being forced to pay those loans off immediately. With that, I'll move items one through four for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Next is a report from the Policy and Government Oversight Committee, given by the Council Vice President, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy and Government Oversight Committee submits 29 items for consideration. Item number one is the proposed charter amendment by ordinance related to the timing of special municipal elections that was transmitted by the Charter Commission. And I would like to pull this item from the committee report for a separate vote. Item number two is passage of a resolution to authorize the sale of land at 2406 McNair Avenue North to Magnolia Homes LLC. Item number three is approving a partially revised settlement of claims in the litigation matter of Walter Louis Franklin II versus Lucas Peterson et al., and authorizing the city attorney's office to execute necessary documents. Item number four is authorizing a contract in the amount not to exceed 300,000 with cornerstone advocacy services to operate a 48-hour domestic violence crisis hotline. Item number five is authorizing a pro bono contract with the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis for the city's 2040 comprehensive plan specifically tied to performance against identified housing goals. Item number six is approving the 2020 Low Barrier Housing Initiative Program Guidelines and Procedures, authorizing the notice of funding availability. Item number seven is approving the 2020 Affordable Housing Trust Fund Program Policies and Procedures and authorizing the notice of funding availability. Item number eight is approving the 2021 Housing Tax Credit Program Qualified Allocation Plan and Procedural Management, I'm sorry, Procedural Manual. Item number nine is authorizing a one-year contract extension with FR Secure LLC for payment card industry data service standards compliance services. Item number 10 is passage of a resolution to accept first quarter donations. Items number 11 and 12 are resolutions amending the 2020 General Appropriation Resolution to approve the rollover of unspent 2019 appropriations from the, from council ward offices and associated 2020 budget adjustments for the council and the mayor. Item number 13 is a resolution that amends the 2020 Health Department budget through reallocations of funds. Item number 14 is the acceptance of a state grant for skin lightening outreach and education in the total amount of $90,000, and passage of a resolution appropriating those grant funds to the Health Department. Item number 15 authorizes the Health Department to submit a grant application to the Centers for Disease Control for community-based approaches to reducing sexually transmitted diseases for a three-year period through August 2023. Item number 16 authorizes a contract amendment with One Neck IT Solutions LLC that increases the overall contract amount and extends that amount through February 28, 2023 for outsourced enterprise IT managed services and authorizing a minimum revenue commitment clause of approximately 60%. Item number 17 authorizes a contract amendment with Arite Consulting Group for Solid Waste Information System and extending that contract through December 31, 2020. Items number 18 through 23 are all contract amendments for work time to the new public service building project, all reflected in details on the agenda. Item number 24 authorizes grant acceptance from the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization for green infrastructure for the Hoya, Hoyer Heights Reconstruction Project. Item number 25 authorizes a contract amendment with Short Elliott Hendrickson for additional sanitary and storm manhole inspection services and extending that contract, contract through March 31, 2021. Item 26 authorizes an amendment to the Temporary Construction Easement Agreement with the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for the Tenth Avenue Southeast Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Item number 27 is passage of a resolution to designate the 2020 Alley Renovation Project Program for the improvement of nine alleys and adopting the report showing project designations, cost estimates, and preparation of special assessments against benefited properties and the setting of a public hearing on June 2020. Item number 28 is accepting the low bid from Rainbow Inc. in the amount of 269,400 for the 11th Avenue Bridge Painting Project in accordance with this, with city specifications. And item number 25, 29, is the passage of a resolution adopting a higher increase policy. Madam President, I move approvals of items two through 29 for the committee report.
Thank you. The Council Vice President has moved items two through 29. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader. Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Schrader. Councilmember Cunningham. Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. That returns us to item number one from the committee report.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item from the committee report is the proposed amendment to the city charter related to the timing of special elections. The city clerk explained at the committee meeting on Wednesday that this item requires the unanimous affirmative vote of the entire fixed membership. That means we would need to have 13 affirmative votes for passage. With the current vacancy in Ward 6, that vote threshold is not possible. So Councilmember Ellison, who chairs our elections committee, has a substitute motion for us, and I would like to recognize him for that substitute motion.
Thank you, President. So you all should have a copy. The clerk did a great job of sending this out, making sure everybody had it, but I'm going to read through the substitute motion. So I move to refer the subject matter of the proposed charter amendment related to the timing of special municipal elections back to the Charter Commission to be combined with the related proposal tied to the conduct of municipal elections following redistricting, which will be referred to voters as a ballot question as part of the November 3 presidential And that is the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Councilwoman Ellison has moved a substitute motion for item one, which would refer the item back to the Charter Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader. Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader. Councilmember Cunningham. Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and the report, that item will be referred back to the Charter Commission. That brings us to the Order of Announcements. Are there any announcements from council members? I don't see any. So with that, we have concluded all of the items on our agenda this meeting, seeing no further business before us. And without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Have a safe weekend, everyone. Thank you so much for all the work this week.